We call this evening's meeting to order. This is the meeting for the town of Pittsboro Board of Commissioners for Monday, November 28, 2016. And we will open the meeting with a moment of silence as is our question. Thank you. Commissioner Jay Farrell, will you lead us in the pledge?
Would everyone rise for pledge? Pledge of lakers.
... in the United States of America, in the new republic from which it stands, on a nation, on God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
We do not have John Bonnitz with us tonight. And we'll talk about that in just a moment. But you have before you the agenda. Is there a motion to approve or modify the agenda?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Moved by Pamela Baldwin, seconded by Michael Fiocco. Those in favor please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? And as to the consent agenda, this is the call for action on the consent agenda to approve or modify the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve?
Submove.
Second. Moved by Michael Fiocco, seconded by Beth Wilkie Foley. Those in favor please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries you in. That is the end of the consent agenda. And at this point I'd entertain a motion to go into public hearing. We have one request in public hearing tonight. Is there a motion to go into public hearing?
Submove.
Second. Moved by Michael Fiocco, seconded by Pamela Baldwin. Those in favor please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you. We have Victoria Bayless leading up to this matter tonight.
This is rezoning RA2-016-0. Patricia Marlowe and her siblings have proposed to upzone their property located at 2214 NC Highway 902 from RA2 to RA. Parcels 6304 and 6298 are 7.625 acres altogether and have been zoned RA2 since the early 1990s. The siblings wish to subdivide the property left to them by their parents. However, the parcel is only large enough to accommodate approximately one acre per sibling. And the minimum lot size of the current zoning district is two acres. Herein lies the reason behind the rezoning request. The future land use plan designates the property for low-density residential. And the properties to the northeast and west are currently zoned RA2 while the properties to the south are zoned both RA2 and RA. The property has been posted and adjacent landowners notified in accordance with the zoning ordinance. Staff recommends that the rezoning request be sent to Planning Board for recommendations following the public hearing. Any questions?
Do we have questions at this point? We have four people signed up for speaking tonight. I'll be ready to speak about. Billy Thompson is our first speaker. Shonda Latticur?
I just lined up just in case there was something I would say and I might want to say something, but it's a little bit different than I planned, so I have no comment at this time.
And do I gather that you're one of the heirs or adjoining property owners?
Right here.
And Linda Hill?
Right here.
Linda Hill, did you wish to make a statement before the board?
I do not, as long as you have two acres together.
We're good.
For one acre, that's my thing.
We got it. We're good.
And Beverly Crump?
Victoria is speaking for me today. She has already spoken and she knows what we wanted.
All right. Were there any questions from the board that remain as it was?
Victoria, remind me, I think you said RA minimum lot size one acre?
Yeah, it's 40,000 square feet.
Okay. And this is 7.65?
Yes.
There is a very narrow entrance onto the public highway. Is there a proposal that is a part of this that would provide for a joint driveway agreement or?
They're going to have an easement. They already have an easement running up that strip right there and they're proposing another easement up the west side as well for easier, better access to the properties.
Are heirs located on either side of this track already?
I believe one of the properties up front is their father's property. So I believe they know most of the.
Okay. Any further questions?
So would this easement be for a private road system or would it be a public driveway?
Just access, just an access easement, private.
If the property gets subdivided, is it able to be served by a private driveway?
I think that's, yeah.
Victoria, it would be a family subdivision. And in family subdivisions, you can do three lots per an easement off of a family. Per, three lots per easement. The current easement has one lot on this Crump's piece there, the smaller track that's for rezoning. That easement could serve two additional lots. And then the new easement would then serve three lots for that area.
So would there be two driveways?
Potentially yes, yeah.
But in order to get seven lots, you'll need to do something more than two driveways?
Seven lots may not be something that is fully attainable.
Okay. Is this an area where the driveway permit needs to be given out onto 902?
It's the state highway, so that would, the state would have to give a driveway permit.
If these are two very close together, just I wondered about the possibility of a driveway permit.
Yeah, I'm not sure. There may be already a driveway onto the front piece of property here and they would just access all of that current driveway. So there wouldn't be a new driveway. It would be extending that current driveway and all that piece of property back to the new lots potentially.
Any further questions? Then that would conclude the public hearing. Is there, we're satisfied with not speaking. Okay. Then I'd entertain a motion then to.
I have a question. In reference to the easement that's currently there, did you say there's one property already on that easement and you could put two more? Or you think there's two homes on that easement already and you could put one more?
No, there's two. This Crump's piece of property is off of that easement.
So you can add one more on that?
Two more.
Two more?
Yes.
Okay.
All right. Is there a motion to go out of public hearing?
Submove.
Second. Moved by Pamela Baldwin, seconded by Beth Wilkie Foley. Those in favor please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion to hear. No one has signed up for public expression speakers tonight. Is there anybody? Oh, yes. We will be sending that to the Planning Board for their first meeting in December. Is there anybody that wishes to take a three-minute public expression that did not sign up? Hearing none, and we'll have Commissioner updates. It's very simple tonight because of the holidays. There have not been many meetings and some of those meetings that were scheduled have been canceled. So are there any other commissioners who have been to? I know certainly that the PPA have various cultural events and so that is just a real gift for the town, sort of Christmas tree lighting. And I hope things went well on Saturday, Lip Shop Local Saturday. Does anybody know how that went?
On photographs, there's going to be a lot of people out. And just similar, like we, on the Pittsboro Town Facebook page, we posted a quote from Pam Smith, who used to be a business owner, and she talked about that she was doing all her shopping at Pittsboro and she named businesses. So we posted on the town page, it got picked up by WREL and it was seen by 25,000 people. So that was some good visibility for our little downtown.
Excellent. Wonderful, thank you. All right. Any further updates then? If not, then we'll proceed to our first item of old business, which is Dr. Knapp reporting to us and updating us on 1-4-dioxane. I think it was almost a year and a half ago, if it not.
A year and two months, almost to the day.
That we had, that we had you here previously. So welcome back and we're interested in what you have to say.
Very well. Good evening, everyone. So Adam Pickett asked me to present tonight and give an update on 1-4-dioxane and Pittsboro's drinking water and also provide a somewhat bigger picture of the occurrence of 1-4-dioxane in the Cape Fear River watershed. If you have any questions either tonight, then of course we can chat. Otherwise, my email address is listed there and I'm happy to receive email and answer questions. That way also. So I'll just give everybody a little bit of a background what 1-4-dioxane is and then talk about 1-4-dioxane occurrence in Pittsboro's source water, which is the Haw River in the drinking water. And then I'll also give some update on the city of Fayetteville because they've been collecting some data beyond what we did in our lab. And then talk a little bit about 1-4-dioxane sources and next steps. So I always like to start out by saying that 1-4-dioxane is not dioxin, which is a much, much more potent carcinogen. So 1-4-dioxane is the compound on the left with the two oxygen atoms. The compound on the right is the dioxin. So 1-4-dioxane has been used a lot as a solvent stabilizer and it's often found in groundwater. But more recently, we've come to realize that 1-4-dioxane is also commonly found in surface water. And so Pittsboro gets their drinking water from the Haw River, which is a surface water. And so surface waters are impacted by upstream wastewater discharges. And so upstream communities have industries such as textile or paper, specialty chemical industries that may use 1-4-dioxane directly as solvents. And then 1-4-dioxane is also produced as a byproduct of manufacturing processes that involve the production of PET plastics, for example, or polyester, or also surfactants that are used in shampoos and detergents and the like. So we've pretty much identified that 1-4-dioxane in the Haw River comes from invisible wastewater discharges and I'll talk about that a little bit more later. 1-4-dioxane is difficult to remove from water. And so one of the reasons is that it's very soluble in water. We call it missable and so it's basically almost infinitely soluble in water. It's very difficult as a result to remove from water, like I said. And the chemical has been monitored nationwide as part of EPA's Unregulated Contaminant Monitoring Rule. So this was an effort that took place between 2013 and 2015 over a period of three years. And across the U.S., finished drinking water samples were collected for public water systems that serve 10,000 people or more. So Pittsboro in that instance basically flew under the radar because the waterworks here serve less than 10,000 people. But I just wanted to give you a little bit of background trends nationwide. But before I go there, I'd also like to always talk a little bit about the risk associated with 1-4-dioxane. So this is always kind of a somewhat difficult concept to convey. When we think about drinking water safety, we typically think about risks in the one in a million to one in 10,000 level are acceptable. So that basically means if you would drink the water over a lifetime, then there would be somewhere between a one in a million and one in 10,000 chance that you might develop cancer from drinking the water with 1-4-dioxane in it. And we do similar calculations for other chemicals. So 1-4-dioxane at a one in a million cancer risk level would be at a concentration of .35 micrograms per liter. So keep that number in mind. And then it's basically just a linear relationship. So if we multiply that by 10, then we get to 3.5 micrograms per liter and that would be a one in 100,000 risk level over a lifetime. And if we multiply by 10 again, we get to 35 micrograms per liter. That would be a one in 10,000 excess cancer risk level. And you know, 1-4-dioxane is not the only chemical that's in water. When we disinfect water with chlorine, we also produce what we call disinfection byproducts. And we consider those, you know, acceptable to a certain degree. And just to kind of place where 1-4-dioxane fits relative to other chemicals like these disinfection byproducts, the one in a million cancer risk levels for those two chemicals that I'm showing there are .6 and .4 micrograms per liter. So they're similar in sort of in the cancer potency as 1-4-dioxane. And currently EPA allows 80 micrograms per liter of the sum of these two plus two additional chemicals. So again, that would put us into this kind of risk level between one in a million and one in 10,000. So that.
Can I, sorry, up here.
Oh, sorry. The sound is coming from there.
Sorry. Did you, I think you just said that, if you go back to that last slide, so .6 micrograms per liter, but did you say EPA allows 80 micrograms per?
Would allow up to 80. Now, so that would actually get you above the one in 10,000 level. So it would be times six, it would be times 10 would give you six and another times 10 would give you 60. Now, you wouldn't form 80 alone of either one of these two. So it's a mixture of four chemicals that are regulated. And the one that forms typically the most is not a carcinogen. So once we look at the aggregate sum of the four, we end up again usually in this one in 10,000, one in 100,000 risk range.
Yes, ma'am, I'm sorry. The two chemicals on the bottom are what everyone's familiar with as TTHMs, those total trihalomethanes. These are two of the components that make up the total trihalomethanes that were regulated on.
Correct. Those, very good.
Yes.
So the trihalomethanes are always shown in the Consumer Confidence Report as one of the disinfection byproducts.
Dr. Knapp, I remember that when we talked a year and two months ago, the phrase I remember was it was a suspected carcinogen. What is the difference between unlikely and a suspected? And what kind of volume of suspected carcinogens are there? I mean, is this one of 100,000 or one of several million?
Well, that's, yeah, that's a very good question. And the answer is that in many ways, we don't know how many carcinogens are out there because we don't have sufficient toxicity data for many of the chemicals that are out there. In terms of the question of likely human carcinogen or suspected, that's similar language. So that's one category below known human carcinogens. So for known human carcinogens, we have epidemiological data where we know that humans were exposed to the chemical and developed cancer from that exposure. With likely or suspected human carcinogens, we have mostly animal data that would tell us that we should suspect that these are cancer-causing chemicals. So in many ways, you know, the fact that we think that certain chemical, the fact that we know that some chemicals are known human carcinogens is usually something that we learned in hindsight when workers were, for example, exposed to a chemical and only later we learned that that was not a good idea. Otherwise, we can't do such experiments, obviously. So when we look at occurrence of 1-4-dioxane nationwide, I have this table here. There are over 36,000 samples that were collected across the U.S. And in North Carolina, there were 13, more than 1,300 samples that were collected from the larger utilities. And we can look at this data both in terms of number of samples collected and the public water systems. So each public water system had to collect on average four samples, one per quarter over a period of a year. And if we look at the samples that had a concentration of .35 micrograms per liter or higher across the U.S., there were 3% of the samples or 7% of the public water systems that had 1-4-dioxane levels that were in excess of the one in a million cancer risk level. In North Carolina, those figures were roughly doubled. So we have a higher occurrence rate of 1-4-dioxane in the utilities that participated in the Unregulated Contaminant Monitoring Rule activity. So any utility serving more than 10,000 people. Also, what's interesting, across the U.S., the samples that were contaminated with 1-4-dioxane were primarily groundwater samples, only 23% were surface water derived. But in North Carolina, 96% of those samples were surface water derived. So that indicates that across the U.S., it's mostly a contaminant that's associated with legacy groundwater contamination, whereas in North Carolina, it's more related to current industrial activities, wastewater discharges. And seven of the 20 highest 1-4-dioxane concentrations across the U.S. occurred in North Carolina and all were taken from the Cape Fear River. So downstream of here, starting with the city of Sanford as the most upstream community and then all the way down to Wilmington and Brunswick County. So this is a map showing the occurrence of samples that have concentrations greater than 3.5 micrograms per liter. So these are samples that exceeded the one in 100,000 cancer risk level. And in blue, or any number in blue is basically groundwater contamination. Any number in green is surface water contamination. So you can see that the highest incidences of 1-4-dioxane occurrence are in California and New York with groundwater and then in North Carolina, the surface water. So we are kind of special across the U.S. in terms of 1-4-dioxane occurrence. So what we started about two years ago was, when we first learned about 1-4-dioxane occurrence in North Carolina, I went to DEQ now and I said, we need to study this. And so we got separately funding from the Urban Water Consortium in North Carolina and also the National Science Foundation to look at this. And the state of North Carolina, DEQ staff also participated in this study. So we had some sampling points where we sampled jointly and we split samples and to separate labs. We did our own analysis at NC State University. The state submitted samples to a commercial lab. And then what we were able to do was sample a lot more sites than what the state could. So students in my group went out and we sampled over 50 locations on a given day up and down the Haw Deep and Cape Fear Rivers. We collected most samples from bridges using a bridge sample. So these are some data for the Haw River at Bynum, very close to the Pittsboro intake. The data start in October of 2014 and the last sample was collected in July of 2016. And if we look at the averages for 2014 and 2015, they were quite similar in the order of 15 to 20 micrograms per liter. In 2016, that number dropped to about 7.5 micrograms per liter. So we think there is some encouraging news here that some 1-4-dioxane sources are being shut down or managed in a more appropriate manner. We have similar data for the city of Fayetteville. And here you can see actually a downward trend over the three-year period. In 2014, they were around four micrograms per liter and now in 2016, they were down to 1.7 micrograms per liter. I should mention that all of these numbers still violate the stream water quality standard that North Carolina has for 1-4-dioxane, which is .35 micrograms per liter. So any of these concentrations should not exceed .35 micrograms per liter in a drinking water source. So this standard is still violated based on all of these data. But there is some encouraging trends visible in terms of, you know, a decrease overall. The other thing I want to mention is that 1-4-dioxane is not removed in conventional surface water treatment plants. So that is true for the town of Pittsboro, it's true for the town of Fayetteville. The concentrations in black are the source water concentrations, the concentrations in that beige color or whatever that is, is the finished drinking water. So the concentrations basically parallel between the raw and finished drinking water. The only plant along the Cape Fear River system that is able to deal with 1-4-dioxane to some extent is the Wilmington plant, the Sweeney Water Treatment Plant. They use ozone to disinfect their water and ozone is able to react with 1-4-dioxane, oxidize the 1-4-dioxane. And they eliminate about two-thirds of the 1-4-dioxane that is in their source water. But still, in their finished water, they have levels that exceed the .35 microgram per liter level. In terms of sources, we identified for the city of Pittsboro really two sources. One is the wastewater discharge from the city of Reedsville, which discharges into the Haw River upstream of Sippy. And what you see here are concentrations of 1-4-dioxane at point A, which is just upstream of the wastewater discharge. And then at point B, in the second column, which is downstream of the wastewater discharge. You can see that up to about October of 2015, some extremely high concentrations were found in the river downstream of the Reedsville wastewater discharge, the record being in September of 2015, where just above 1,000 micrograms per liter of 1-4-dioxane were in the river. Since then, it looks like the levels are dropping. So single-digit concentrations in the river in January, in April. And the state, who's been collecting these data recently, is using a method that has a reporting limit of two micrograms. a reporting limit of two micrograms per liter. So in July of 2016, the level was below the reporting limit of two micrograms per liter. So that's looking potentially encouraging. The second source is the TZ Osborn wastewater treatment plant that services Greensboro. And that wastewater plant discharges into South Buffalo Creek, which eventually in Sippy through Reading Ford Creek meets the Haaw River. And here, we see perhaps, you know, some moderation, you know, in the beginning of 2015, in January and March, we saw levels exceeding a hundred micrograms per liter in South Buffalo Creek. Since then, we haven't crossed a hundred, but in January of 2016, it was still eighty-six. So the city of Greensboro has identified at least one important source and they are working with that facility to more, you know, to eliminate that 1-4-oxane discharge or at least minimize 1-4-oxane discharges. The data so far look somewhat mixed, you know, so we, I think there is more work that needs to be done. So what I want to close with is just, you know, what can we do about this? And so in terms of the regulatory framework on the drinking water side, there is no federal drinking water standard for 1-4-oxane. So what that means is even though there are potentially, you know, well, there used to be much higher levels, now somewhat lower levels of 1-4-oxane in drinking waters and communities in the Cape Fear River Basin, they're not violating any standard. So the drinking water officially is safe because there is no standard. For North Carolina, there is no separate drinking water standard for 1-4-oxane, but North Carolina has a groundwater standard of three micrograms per liter. So that is more to protect, designed to protect private well owners. In my conversation with DEQ, they, the DEQ staff is saying that that three-microgram-per-liter level is probably too high and outdated, so that level might get lower. What's unique for North Carolina is that we have this narrative stream water quality standard that I pasted here at the bottom. It says for carcinogens, "The concentrations of toxic substances shall not result in unacceptable health risks and shall be based on a carcinogen potency factor. An unacceptable health risk for cancer shall be considered to be more than one case of cancer per one million people exposed." So that's the ten to the minus six risk level. So that standard basically says that for 1-4-oxane, the source water should not have a level more than point three-five micrograms per liter. So my conversations with the state, that's always what I push on, you know, it's not really the most appropriate thing to ask the many drinking water providers in the Cape Fear River Basin to all install a very expensive treatment to remove 1-4-oxane, but instead, 1-4-oxane should be controlled at the source. So in conclusion then, what we find is that sources of 1-4-oxane exist in the uppermost reaches of the Cape Fear River watershed. One of those sources looks like it may be under reasonable control. The other one, I think, still needs to be dealt with more strongly. The surface water quality standard continues to be exceeded at drinking water intakes in the watershed from Pittsburgh on down to Wilmington. In our conversations with our working group, so we have a working group that involves the DEQ staff, staff from communities that are dischargers of 1-4-oxane and staff of drinking water providers who are affected by 1-4-oxane that are located downstream of those dischargers. So in those conversations, the pre-treatment staff has indicated that in the municipalities where 1-4-oxane is being discharged, that industries are identified and that proper control measures are being put into place. So right now, this is all pretty much on a voluntary basis and trust whether the industries will actually follow through. So this is something that I think a very watchful eye is required still. I think some progress is being made, but it's kind of slow. And what we think is perhaps visible in the data is some trend of decreasing concentrations, which is encouraging. But I think it's still, in my opinion, an existing issue and as of this morning, in email conversations with DEQ, we are still struggling to get the kind of horsepower that we would like to see in terms of future steps that DEQ should take to better manage the sources. So the options that are available, what the state will probably be doing is they will change the discharge permits of the city of Reedsville, the city of Greensboro. And the first requirement will simply be a monitoring requirement. So they have to measure how much 1-4-oxane is in their treated wastewater. This monitoring period may last as long as twenty-four months, so that's two years. So only after that, the state may then modify the permits such that there will be an upper limit of how much 1-4-oxane can be discharged from the source communities that we've identified. So the process along that route will take potentially still quite long. Also, DEQ currently has a five-hundred-day BAP law on PDEs permits. So, you know, the official permitting route will be a long one. So in the meantime, I think it's important to be watchful and to, you know, continue to put pressure on the upstream discharging communities to make sure that this, that they know people are watching, that this doesn't slip. So I think that that's really the best thing that we can do at this point, you know, to keep watching and putting pressure. That's my story on 1-4-oxane. I have two other slides that I could show on a different kind of chemical that is also in the Cape Fear River water and that I think the city of Pittsburgh will start, be able to start dealing with better, starting this month with the feed of powdered activated carbon on a continuous basis. But maybe I'll take some questions first and then I can show those other slides.
Is it true that Fayetteville has instituted some sort of a lawsuit regarding the 1-4-oxane, that they are witnessing at their water treatment plant?
I am not aware of it if they did.
Okay. We'd heard that that was a possibility, but I didn't know if they'd actually gone ahead with it.
To the best of my knowledge, that has not been initiated, but I am not aware of every activity that's being pursued right now.
Would you say that the, that strategy for us would be to apply pressure on DEQ at the state level or to try to make friends upstream? Because we had talked as a board about going upstream and having a meeting with the mayors and town councils, particularly of Reedsville and Greensboro. And then we heard that the state was perhaps going to take over and do some additional monitoring. So where would you advise us to put, to put our energy?
I think both approaches that you mentioned are useful. I personally am always a friend of pursuing things in a friendly manner and really just starting conversations and just explaining to people, "Well, would you want to be in this predicament, you know? Would you want to have such high levels of 1-4-oxane in your drinking water?" So I think just starting that conversation, looking people in the eye and, you know, asking questions like, "Well, how should, how would you respond if the media would call?" And once an answer to the question, "Is the drinking water safe?", all of those things are helpful, you know? So I think establishing linkages with upstream communities is very possible. But providing pressure, you know, is another avenue that may very well be necessary. I think some people are more cooperative perhaps than others.
Do you know the name of the industry that involved?
There was an article that was recently published, I can share that with you, called "Tainted Waters," and the reporter actually did identify some of those industries. In the case of the city of Greensboro, we do not know what the identity of the industry is. The reporter actually FOIAed Greensboro and they did release information, but it was redacted. And so we do not know what the industry is. In the case of Reedsville and Ashboro, which is another source on the Deep River, those industries were identified. I don't have the names in my head right now, but I can share that with you. So in one case, it was a PET plastics manufacturer, in another case, I think it's a yarn facility that is dyeing yarn.
I noticed that the big spikes that came in the middle of 2015 in your charts, when you were here last time or when you were at the conservation group a couple of months later, I remember you saying they may have released large amounts during a rain event that would hopefully flush downstream fairly quickly.
Would get more diluted.
And it would sort of hide or cover up the, their discharges. Is that still what you believe those high spikes are in mid-2015?
Very hard to tell. It is quite, you know, interesting to observe that those, the recalculated mass flows, basically. So if we take these concentrations and multiply them by the flow of water in the river, we can calculate the mass that was released. And those masses were orders of magnitude higher during those storm events. But what exactly happened, whether that was deliberate or whether, and I've heard in the meantime, you know, like during storm events, maybe the wastewater treatment plant is not functioning as well, you know, there's maybe less treatment. But, you know, it's speculation, you know, it's just something that we found odd that the mass flows were so much higher during the storm event.
What other municipalities or other water providers are taking water from the Haaw upstream of Pittsburgh?
None.
So we are the first one.
You're the first one, so you're the most upstream community. And the Haaw, you're the only one that takes water from the Haaw. After that, it becomes the Cape Fear Rivers, and Sanford and Wilmington are the next two.
Do you take samples from Jordan Lake?
We have taken, no, we have taken samples at the dam. That's the only samples that we have taken.
Upstream of the dam or downstream?
We've taken upstream at the, basically at Bynum and also the Highway sixty-four bridge across the Haaw River. And then downstream, just immediately downstream of the dam.
Of the Jordan Lake Dam?
Jordan Lake Dam.
I'd be curious to know if the levels are diluted by Jordan Lake and if they increase again as you go downstream with other discharges?
So they, so we have monitored that. So they are diluted in Jordan Lake and then they keep being diluted as you go further downstream. So the lowest levels of 1-4-oxane are in Wilmington. So you can, you can really see the dilution that occurs. So that's why we are so certain there are really only three major sources, one on the Deep and one on the Haaw and one in South Buffalo Creek. And all other wastewater dischargers have much, much lower levels of 1-4-oxane in their wastewater. So this is something that we were interested in also from a research perspective because, you know, the question arose, well, you know, 1-4-oxane is in consumer products, you know, in detergents and shampoos. So every wastewater discharge has some 1-4-oxane in it. But, you know, the city of Fayetteville actually let us sample their wastewater effluent and we found levels between one and two micrograms per liter in their wastewater, for example. And so that is actually in agreement with a study that was published a couple of years ago where they sampled forty wastewater discharges across the country and the levels all were less than two-something, two-point-two micrograms per liter. So there's something very special about the three wastewater discharges that we identified, orders of magnitude higher concentration.
You said that ozone eliminates two-thirds of it in Wilmington. How involved is that for waste, for treatment plants to have at the tool?
It's quite expensive to install ozonation. It involves the construction of a very deep basin that's approximately twelve to fifteen feet deep. It would be a new basin and they'd have to construct, you have to generate ozone sites, so you have to run ozone generators. That takes quite a bit of electricity. Also, you form the byproducts. And so one challenge, we haven't really talked much about in particular, is bromide. And also bromide leads to disinfection byproducts. And in the case of ozone, you might form bromide. So it's not a complete slam dunk to install ozone. So the safer method would be ultraviolet light with hydrogen peroxide, but the electricity requirement for that, it would be tremendous.
This is more of a question for Adam. If we have spikes like that, is that something that we notify the public about? If we have a high spec, it sounds like this is not even one of the, having on the list, but I just wondered.
No, we don't notify the public. One, we only test once or twice a month in a private lab because it's terribly expensive for us to monitor this. Plus, our results are probably three weeks behind what it would have been. One day it may be almost zero, the next time we sample it may be three or four. I definitely have not seen the numbers Dr. Knappi has seen, but please understand this was several more samples than we currently are taking.
That's one of the big challenges with this, this whole wastewater discharge problem. It's so episodic in nature that you can almost never know what the concentration is. And we, and some days when we sampled on the same day as DEQ, maybe just a couple hours apart, the concentrations were very different. So you would have to almost continuously monitor if you wanted to know what the concentration is.
Assuming that we went to Greensboro and to Reedsville to talk with them in a gentle way about, about these discharges, are they likely to say to us? way about, about these discharges, are they likely to say to us, well, in order to do a pre-treatment program upstream, we would have to expend large amounts of money just like we were talking about with the ozone. And is there, is that going to be their argument back to us, or do you anticipate that they're going to be much more cooperative than that?
Well, really, in a pre-treatment program, the burden falls on the industry that would discharge into the sewer. So, so all of this, in my view, is really a question of corporate responsibility or business responsibility. So there wouldn't really be an extra cost necessarily to the community. The argument that you will probably hear is, well, if business X has to change, they might either have to close or they might move, and so then it becomes a jobs argument which may or may not be real, right? And, you know, you would have to understand how profitable the particular business is to see whether they could afford appropriate treatment.
Given the disaster of the Jordan Lake solar bees, how would you rate the responsibility of the state in this particular political climate to environmental questions such as this?
Well, Tom Reader, who was pretty high up in DEQ, says that one four dioxide apart from coal ashes is, is sort of biggest problem right now. So we certainly have the attention of DEQ. But like I kind of outlined earlier, the mechanics of DEQ solving the problems, this problem through regulatory action is a very slow process. So I think trying to work, you know, outside of the system in addition to working with DEQ is important.
Yes.
I was just going to point out, looking at the history of the weather of August 2015, apparently there was a tropical storm, Erica, around the time of that big spike, and that's probably really just that tropical.
Right, that's, that's, you know, when we started thinking about, you know, why, why is it that the concentrations are higher when the river flow is so high? Now, the other thing that I might just briefly mention, I think, is related to this class of chemicals, I don't know how much you've heard about perfluorinated compounds. PFOA and PFOS are chemicals that are used, for example, as firefighting agents, the PFOS, and the PFOA is a surfactant that's used to make things like Teflon and Gore-Tex. And we just published a paper that looked at the occurrence of perfluorinated compounds in the Cape Fear River watershed, and so Community A is Pittsboro, B is Fayetteville, and C is Wilmington. And what's different in Wilmington is, is there's a fluorochemical manufacturer between Fayetteville and Wilmington. So Wilmington is getting a large dose of this chemical that I'm showing in the red bar, which is a replacement for PFOA. But Community A, Pittsboro, the levels are also relatively high. And when we sum up PFOS and PFOA, the EPA recently issued a new health advisory at 70 nanograms per liter, and in this particular study, we averaged at 90 nanograms per liter for Pittsboro, so slightly above that health advisory level. But in this case, powdered activated carbon will likely bring those levels down, and so that's, you know, a treatment strategy that would alleviate some of the perfluorinated compounds that are present in the Pittsboro drinking water. Wilmington was doing okay with one four dioxide, these chemicals zipped through the Wilmington plane untouched, so it's quite a challenging new problem. I just wanted to mention that. So it's another group of chemicals to keep an eye out for, but, you know, the PFOS and PFOA can be dealt with through absorption with activated carbon. And that's the story.
Thank you. I have a question for you.
Yes.
When you're in Pittsboro, do you drink the water?
I just got coffee. That's where this risk question comes into play. You know, I drove here tonight, I took a much greater risk driving here than drinking the water. So it's not a public health crisis, but at the same time, I find that these chemicals serve no purpose, so there, there's risk that can be avoided, and I think that's the main message here, you know, these chemicals have really no business of being in the drinking water. The universe of chemicals is somewhere on the order of, you know, 100,000 plus. We know very little about most of those chemicals, and, you know, if one chemical is present at one in a million cancer risk level and we have 100, then it's already 100 in a million, and if it's 1,000, it's 1,000 in a million. So there is a lot of things we don't know. So I think with my European background, I'm a subscriber to the precautionary principle, and that basically says, you know, I can avoid certain risks, I should avoid them.
I have one question.
Yes.
So basically, those companies or agencies or whomever that is dumping those used products into the water system, are they looking at other ways to try to get rid of that waste other than putting it into the water system that is coming down from rainfore or Reedsville? Are they looking at any type of alternatives or anything at this point? I know it's not any, this particular, what you're talking about, this dioxide, is not a thing which is actually controlled or looked at by the environmental quality, and they don't have to actually pull it out, but are they now, since that may be something that may be going to happen later on, are they looking at alternatives to try to find a way to do something with that waste from the product that they're making other than putting it into the water?
So that's a very good question, and there are really a number of questions that we need to ask, you know, also as the levels of one four dioxide decrease, you know, what are these industries really doing to bring those levels down? You know, so one option could be that they capture the chemical at the facility, maybe reuse it even. Maybe they are able to treat it at that facility and just destroy it, you know, through an oxidative process, for example. And then you could discharge it into the water and it would be safe, but you need that deep, that extra treatment step. Now, you know, the thing that worries me a little bit is, you know, would they perhaps replace one four dioxide with another chemical and fly below the radar again? And so that's something that, you know, would be a very good question to ask of those facilities that are sourced. I understand that if one four dioxide is a byproduct, you can also modify production processes to minimize the formation of the byproduct, so you just don't form it in the first place.
I didn't ask on what you're saying, like that industries will hold their chemical until there's a big storm, and it makes me feel like maybe that's not a good time to drink.
Well, I, yeah, we would have to do really a lot more reconnaissance to prove whether or not that is, you know, generally true, or whether in a big storm like this tropical storm, some failure occurred and some chemical was released, but it was.
I believe it had been.
Right, right.
I had another question for Adam. You had very kindly given me a list of all of the state people that you had initiated conversations with, and I think you and I both ran into proverbial bureaucratic brick wall because we got passed from one agency to another to another. So I'm taking down the DEQ people that you have noted here, Dr. Knapp, because I found it really very unproductive to just get passed from person to person, oh, well, our department's not involved in that, let me pass you on to so-and-so, oh, but they're on vacation. It was, it was the most instructive trick to bureaucracy.
So my recommendation is, if you want to get to just talk with a group of people, I have their attention. So just tell me you want to talk with them and I'll set up a meeting.
Right.
So we had a meeting, I think in October, and I had 15 people around the table, so they were from all the different departments. So I'm happy to organize that.
I mean, I just have one more question. So with this, what you're talking about, you're going to have this roundtable discussion, are any of those manufacturing companies going to be there?
So far, they have not. I, you know, so that's kind of the fine line that I'm trying to dance on, you know, I've so far taken the position that I don't really need to know who the dischargers are as long as everybody gets their act together. But there may come a time when more severe measures are needed, you know. So right now, you know, I, I'm not sure that a legal route in the end, so these companies very quickly get very scared. So as soon as, as even the threat of a lawsuit lurches, I think things might shut down in terms of conversations. So right now, my approach has been, as long as we make progress, it's better than everybody shutting down and we make no progress, maybe for decades, you know, getting stuck in lawsuits.
How would you think to about, when I'm thinking about the Fittitown lawsuit, blackjack, the conversation with them?
Yeah.
That they can know what is actually going on and what.
Oh, oh, they, they know, they know, they know. So the chain of command basically is, if you will, we have this working group, and part of this working group are the pre-treatment people of the state of DEQ. The pre-treatment people of the state talk with the pre-treatment people of the communities where one four dioxide originates. Those pre-treatment people talk with the industries. Those people know who the industries are. The industries know that they're causing a problem. So, but it's, right now, I feel not necessary for me to talk with those industries.
Emergency, the numbers coming down, it sounds like your September 18th annual coming, something's happening.
Right. So promises are being made, and I'm a natural skeptic, so I think, you know, the numbers show some progress, but we're not there yet. So I think just keep, keep pushing, you know, that's what, and so if, if you all want to be part of that, you know, establishing relations with Greensboro and Reedsville and with DEQ, I think it will be useful.
You mentioned that Greensboro is entering into a two-year testing sampling period?
As soon as the state will require that, often, it's not, it has not yet been issued that requirement.
Are you concerned that the change in leadership of Washington's life impact, you know, retired levels, that there's been top of, literally some of the, you know, now, that's a level.
I, I guess it really remains to be seen. I'm doubtful that the federal government really would have that much say over it. I'm perhaps more worried that, you know, locally, something might happen where, you know, like efforts of just, you know, and the narrative standard that I showed, and somebody could challenge that, for example, you know. So there, but in the end, you know, if you sit around a table and ask somebody, well, what shall I tell my citizens about carcinogens in drinking water, is usually the most effective way to get people back to the issue.
Any further questions? Thank you very much, Dr. Knapp. I wondered if you would send us that article, was that troubled waters?
Tainted waters, yeah, I will send that to you, yes.
And a copy of your report, would that be possible?
They're already with you, but I can.
I just received those tonight, you know, I've been asking for them, I'll just print those off.
Okay, great. Thank you. Thank you very much. Adam, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. The next item under Old Business is the audit presentation. Heather Meacham and people from Reeves and Associates.
So I'm just going to introduce Jay Sharp, he's going to give the presentation. The auditors came at the beginning of October, he did their audit, and so he's going to give you an update on that.
My name is Jay Sharp, I'm the Director of Audit Services for Reeves and Associates. Thank you for having me out here today. I am going to give a presentation of the 2015-2016 audits. You should have a package in front of you that includes tonight's presentation, two letters, and the draft of the financial statements themselves. First thing I want to start out with is the status of the audit. Fieldwork, as Heather mentioned, we came out in July, this preliminary fieldwork, and then came back out in October and finished up our fieldwork with the audit this year. That has been completed. The financial statements have been prepared and are currently in draft form. We are awaiting submission and approval to the LGC before issuance. We received a couple things from Heather today, and we'll be wrapping up the audit financial statements tomorrow, and should be submitting those to the local government commission for their review and approval. That due date is decent before, so we should get in before that due date comes about. Roles and objectives. Our role as the auditor is first, to plan the audit, and that includes obtaining an understanding of internal controls over key areas. Obviously, you have some major financial areas with towns such as cash, receivables, revenues, expenses, et cetera. So we get an understanding of this, controls over those key areas. In conjunction with that, we perform what you call a risk assessment, and we will look at every area and determine what audit procedures we need to attack during an audit. Obviously, higher-risk areas are ones that we're going to look at in more detail than lower-risk areas. And the reason you hire us is to give an opinion on the financial statements. Obviously, you're required to have an annual audit by the state, but you hire us to give that opinion on the financial statements, and we perform audit procedures in order to render that opinion. This opinion concentrates on whether the financial statements are free of material in the statement. So results of this year's audit. Scope and timing of audit are on track. As I said, we are going to submit the audit to the local government commission tomorrow, and that's before the December 1 deadline. We are issuing an unmodified opinion this year. That is the best possible opinion you can receive on the financial statements. If there are any major issues with the town's finances, that'd be the first place you'd see it. But like I said, the town has received an unmodified opinion, and that's the opinion that you should try for every year. There are several management letter points this year. They're the same management letter points we've had in previous audits. I think major reason for the remaining, own the management letter year after year is because there has been turnover in the finance officer's position. I think we're. I think we're, we've worked with three different finance directors in the four years we've done the audit. And so a lot of these management letter points are ones that are, would be solved if a finance director stays, you know, two or three years, because they're more long-term points than short-term points. So hopefully Heather's able to solve these in the future. We had several adjustment journals related to our audit procedures. On the results, we did have one finding this year that related, and I'll talk about that one group of financial statements, that related to the over expenditure of the budget. So required communication. As I said, there are two letters that accompany the audit. The first letter I want to talk about is called the SAS 114 letter, and that's communications to the board on how the audit proceedings went, according to us. So this year, there were no major accounting policy changes that are disclosed in the financial statements. The estimates appear reasonable. Not every number is a concrete number. Some numbers have to be developed through an estimate. And some of the major estimates that the town has that we evaluate on a annual basis are depreciations. Obviously, the town has a good number of capital assets, whether it be buildings, vehicles, equipment, et cetera, and that's depreciated over estimated values of those, estimated lives of those assets, whether it be, for example, a vehicle. That might be depreciated over five years, but some vehicles might last 10 years, some might last three. And so we evaluate the estimated lives of every asset that we look at. Allowance for doubtful accounts. Obviously, you have a receivable in the books. Some accounts are determined to be uncollectible, and a lot of that's based on the aging of those accounts. Obviously, a account that's 10 days old is more collectible than a account that's a year old. And so a lot of estimation goes in the allowance for doubtful accounts. The next one is the estimate of other post-employment benefits. The state provides a spreadsheet which is used to come up that liability. This is really, last year, the town's going to be allowed to use that spreadsheet. The LGC has put into place that each town is going to have to have an actuary come in and develop this liability in the future. So that's something that the town's going to need to hire for the 2016-2017 year and ask for every town within the state of North Carolina. So a couple things also with the communications. There were no disagreements with management. There were no difficulties encountered during the audit process. Everybody fully cooperated with us, and we received complete cooperation from the finance department and every other town personnel we spoke to during the audit process. So a couple things I want to run through, kind of give some life to that, meaning to the numbers. So the first slide you will see is the general fund summary for the last three years. The blue being the revenues of the town, the general fund, and the red being the expenditures. And the first thing you notice is the blue's higher than the red each year, so your revenues have been higher the last three years than your expenditures each year. The next slide is kind of charting the general fund balance over the last four years. As you can see, back in 2013, it was $2.6 million, and it's grown to $4.2 million for our 2016, so it's heading the right direction. The next graph is breakdown of fund balance. This is very important. There's three components of your fund balance as of June 30 of 2016. Non-spendable, restricted, and unassigned fund balance. The LGC recommends that your unassigned fund balance be at least 8%. It actually requires that. Based on the calculation of June 30 of 2016, your unassigned fund balance is 91%. Basically, it equals 91% of your last year's expenditures. So you exceed the LGC's requirement by quite a bit. Some other things we put to the numbers to test is adequate resources, and this relates to the general fund. Basically, we look at the cash balances, the unrestricted cash balances at year-end. And so if the town wants to receive no more cash influx as of June 30 of 2016, how long can the town operate based on last year's expenditures? And as you can see, we're pretty consistent the last three years. The calculation is 349 days for 2016 compared to 352 in 2015 and 344 in 2014. So basically, your cash balances are doing very well at year-end, and you can continue for almost a year if you receive no more cash. Now let's look at the water and sewer fund. Once again, this is a positive graph here. You can continue operating for 521 days based on 2015-16 expenditures in the water and sewer fund. So well over a year, almost a year and a half. And that number has increased compared to 2014, whereas at 400 days. Next graph talks about your property taxes. These are revenues related to property taxes over the last three years. $2.1 million in 2016 compared to almost $1.9 million back in 2014. The next two handles show the expenditure breakdown, 2016, 2015. You'll see the graphs look pretty similar. The top three expenditure areas, first are public safety at 40% for 2016. Then you have general government at 22%, and at 14%, you have transportation. Those are your three top spending areas, and the same for 2015. Those are the top three areas expenditure used for in 2015. Next slide relates to operating cash flows, and this is for the water and sewer fund. Obviously, you want to see positive cash flows for the majority of years, because you're in the business, this is a business-type activity, and so you want to generate positive cash flows, because what you're in the business of doing is providing water and sewer funds to the town. So you see it's positive for all three years. It's been up and down. 2016 was positive by $230,000 compared to a positive of $43,000 back in 2014. Next, looking at the water and sewer fund, and this is the operating revenues versus operating expenditures. Unlike the general fund, you see that the expenditures outweigh the revenues each year. A little bit miss telling, because these are operating. You have some non-operating revenues that actually make this water and sewer fund profitable the last three years. So nothing to be concerned about here. Overall, the water and sewer fund has been profitable. One of the things we like to take a look at, looking at the water and sewer fund, looking at short-term liquidity risk, is the quick ratio. And basically, this says, can you pay your current liabilities with what you have as current assets? The generally-used rate is, you want this to be a two-to-one ratio, basically 200%. And as you can see from the graph, in 2016, you're at 910%, which is a nine-to-one ratio, and it's gone up each of the last two years. So you're well over what is generally recommended for the quick ratio with the water and sewer. So I'll be, the one thing before I take any questions, I did want to reiterate about the one finding. Did over expend the budget as related to the sanitation contract? It was only about $5,000, but unfortunately, if you're overexpending a portion of that budget, it's an automatic finding. So that was the one finding you did have with the financial statements this year. But I'll be glad to entertain any questions you may have concerning the audit and the audit process. Yes, and we do a number of towns roughly around the same size as Pittsburgh, and I would say you're probably the healthiest of all the towns that we do before. You can go to State Treasurer's website, and there's some comparison you can bring up if you go there and you look at towns, based on population or based on whether you have water sewer funds or electric funds, and it will spit out some numbers comparing your town to other towns. And I ran a quick ratio earlier today, and you're doing very well compared to other towns the same size.
Thank you. Thank you, Jay Sharp. Excellent. The next item under Old Business is Chatham Park Advisory Committee Report. This is an update from Jim Knapp and Jeff Jones.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the board. Jim is really going to drop the ship tonight on the CPAC update. I just wanted to let you all know that he's here and he's going to update you all on the first four elements. He's really just building the preamble to the additional elements, which will be, for them, it's phasing, signage, lighting, and parking and loading. And I think Jim's going to go over a little bit about the process of the committee, too. He wants to share that with you, and Jim and I will be here for any questions that
Thank you. Madam Mayor, Commissioners, behalf of the committee, I'm pleased to present you with a progress report and then recommendations on those elements. As you know, there are 12 additional elements, and in order to accomplish our task, we decided to break those elements down into three groups of four. And the way we've set up the function is we have a meeting where Chatham Park comes in and gives us a briefing on those four elements, and they entertain questions from the committee. Then we have subsequent meeting, or in this current case, two meetings, where we go through those additional elements in a discussion format and kind of bounce ideas back and forth off each other and have discussion. And then we come back for another meeting where we look at recommendations and actually vote on those recommendations. And so one point that's not on the slide is that in between the discussion period and the recommendation period, the committee members have agreed to rough draft their recommendations and get them to me, and we're able to distribute those to the committee members, so they have a chance to look at those recommendations before we sit down and discuss them. The, so, so far, in terms of progress, we've had a meeting where we got organized, we developed our structure that I just talked about, and we've had a meeting where Chatham Park talked about these first four elements. We discussed them, and we've made recommendations, which I'll share with you tonight, 14 of them. And finally, we've had a meeting already on the second four elements with Chatham Park giving us a briefing on those. So in terms of recommendations, we, as I say, have had 14 recommendations for you, and I might just note that all the recommendations were passed by the committee with no dissenting vote. So we were able to achieve consensus on these recommendations. In the preamble to the additional elements, the definitions and general provisions, there's a provision in there that provided that the developer could use a buffer on adjacent properties. We are recommending that that not be allowed, because without control of that adjacent property, the additional, the buffering may be degraded and cease to serve its function. And so that's the reason for that one. Secondly, and perhaps one that took quite a bit of discussion from us, we're recommending that the town do a very, very careful analysis of the additional elements and the UDO, and identify significant differences that occur and make a judgment as to whether or not those significant differences ought to be looked at in a way of reconciling them. We think we're finding that there are some provisions in the additional elements that would fit better in the UDO, and perhaps some things, language in the UDO that might fit better in additional elements. And so we're suggesting that that, that work be done to, to check those differences out and make sure that they ought not to be reconciled. In the definitions and general provisions section also, there is a provision that says that the standards contained in additional elements shall, as a matter of law, be deemed to be consistent with and conforming with any subsequently adopted ordinance of the town, including the UDO. The committee believes that if there are differences between the UDO and the additional elements in a future time, that a meeting ought to be required to at least discuss that, those differences, and decide whether or not some change ought to be made to that additional element. Appears to us from just reading it that the only way that that could happen now is to be if Chatham Park came to the town and said, gee, we'd like to talk about a change in this additional element because of a change you all just made in the UDO in the future. We think that ought to be a requirement to have that discussion, and the town ought to be able to initiate it. In terms of phasing, we're simply recommending that you ensure that the infrastructure and support implications for town support be included in this developer agreements or subsequently in smaller area plans, because I put it sort of a gentle reminder to the town to make certain that those things are spelled out in one of those two places. In signage, there's a provision in the additional element that exempts activity centers, and while we are all in favor of the idea that those activity centers employ the greatest in terms of creativity and design principles, we still believe that the town ought to be able to approve those, those changes or those recommendations to the master sign plan. In other words, if something's going to be put into an activity center in terms of signage that's outside of what's provided for in the master sign plan, the town ought to be able to approve that. We saw some really neat things, by the way, in terms of examples of creativity in these activity center kinds of places. We saw a couple that we don't think Pittsburgh would want to approve if they had that opportunity. So we're suggesting the town retain the authority to approve signage in those areas. Parking and loading. There's a section in loading that provides for off-street parking for bicycles that, where off-street parking may be reduced, one space for each two off-street bicycle parking spaces. And the committee believes there ought to be a minimum parking space required, off-streets parking spaces required, and then if your space is being provided above that minimum, they can be traded for bicycle spaces. Our concern is that you could be substituting down to the point where you did not, didn't provide sufficient regular parking spaces. So we think there ought to be a minimum. We're inserting a phrase of encouraging green practices, such as permio pavements on parking lots and loading areas, and we're clear that that's an encouragement. And we're, what we're saying here is in this whole area, we ought to be as green as we possibly can. Anyplace that makes sense to do so, our committee would like the town to do that. Along those same lines, in Section 2 of the parking and loading additional element, it says that up to 10% of the parking spaces could be used as EV charging stations, and we're asking that that 10% not be the, the maximum, but rather be set as a goal. Our goal is 10%, and that we ought to be able to include language that includes other supporting fuel alternative energy sources as they come along. And so what we're saying is, rather than capping this at 10%, let's make that a goal that we want our 10%. There's just a simple section in the table in Section 1A that includes uses not permitted in Chatham Park and what their parking requirements would be, and we're suggesting those be removed. And then we wanted to provide an alternative when public transit becomes available, so we're suggesting the planning director be given the authority to approve a reduction in the number of required spaces for residences that are within a half-mile of public transportation. And that the planning director may approve vertical and/or underground parking, that is what it sounds like, a parking garage for vertical parking. Lighting, we had a number of discussions on lighting, and the upshot of the lighting discussion was that this committee is very, very strongly committed to the idea of dark skies. It, and, and what we're trying to do with our recommendation here is to say that with dark skies, the town ought to, in this particular case, change out the purposes from the additional element to include those purposes that are recommended by the Illumination Engineering Society and by the International Dark Skies Committee. And then we're saying that, in this particular case, the UDO ought to be written in such a way as to follow the model lighting ordinance light, which has three zones to let, and lays, and has been jointly developed by the Engineering Society and by the Dark, International Dark Skies Association. And then we require Chatham Park to live by that UDO in place. So it's kind of a two-step thing. We're, we're asking you to, recommending to you We're asking you to -- recommending to you that you adopt the Model Lighting Ordinance as a part of the UDO and then require Chatham Park to follow it. In this particular instance, we're saying that Chatham Park and the rest of Pittsburgh ought to, together, have the same rules and the same regulations regarding lighting, so that we really make strides towards this becoming the Dark Skies community. And interestingly enough, we found that in North Carolina, there's only one certified Dark Skies community that's in a park in the mountains somewhere. And so anyway, this was a very, very strong recommendation from the committee, and those really wrap up the 14 recommendations that were made by this committee. And we are beginning to work now on having our discussions on the next four, and then we'll continue on with the four after that. We'll be happy to take any questions you might have on any of these recommendations.
Questions for the board? For those of us who have come to your meetings from time to time, we're hardly impressed with the work that your committee is doing. Thank you very much for --
Thank you. I will pass that on to the committee. And as long as I have the microphone, just one second. I have, Madam Mayor, a check from the ABC Board for $9,531, and I will give that to you as a sum here.
Thank you very much.
Jim?
Oh, yes.
Yeah, a couple of things. I think you -- one of the recommendations, number nine, was to not list uses in the parking table that aren't permitted in Chatham Park.
Mm-hmm, yes.
Could you come up with the specific sections?
Uh, yeah, hang on a second here. It's in Section 1A of the Parking and Loading Additional Element, and that table includes a list of -- that includes items that in other parts of the master plan or additional elements aren't permitted there, but they're still listed there as a parking requirement. And so the recommendation was to take those out, and if later on, there's an additional use approved, the parking requirement for that could be submitted as a part of that new use.
Yeah, and I looked back through the master plan, it seems that there are very few uses in our existing ordinance that have been excluded.
Mm-hmm.
As a handful, and I think it was mobile homes and fracking.
Yeah.
And so are those items listed in that parking table?
Yes, I mean, there's items listed. I can't tell you exactly which ones, but there's several items listed in the parking table that are not permitted in Chatham Park. And we can find you, we can give you the details.
Yeah, that'd be helpful, I think.
Absolutely.
Yeah. Your comment on number 11 about the planning director having the administrative ability to grant vertical or underground parking, is there anything in the ordinance or in the master plan that says that needs any kind of special approval?
No, but there's nothing listed in there that indicates. If you were to read it, you would almost -- we came to the conclusion that it is either not permitted or not encouraged. In other words, there's nothing in that element that gives you any sense that it is even being considered as a possibility. And what we're saying is that it ought to be given consideration, and there ought to be a method for that to happen.
But I guess if it's not limited in any way, shape, or form, then it is by fault permitted?
Well, perhaps, but our committee took it as it not being listed or not being talked about in any way, shape, or form as being the rare exception and being excluded by choice rather than by regulation.
And so the EV parking, you're looking -- your recommendation is to make 10% the minimum?
No, we're saying 2% ought to be a goal. Rather than cap at 10%, we're saying, let's make 10% a goal, and then if we can go above 10%, that's great. The way it reads now, you could not go over 10% of the parking spaces without an exception.
And I wonder if that's 10% of the required parking spaces, such that the next parking space is free to be whatever it wants?
Yeah. That's the way we read it.
So I think, you know, when we're talking about requirements, I think if we're talking about a goal, you know, I think we've got to be -- our language needs to be more clear.
It has to be less than that.
Well, yeah, yeah. So I mean, if we -- I think if we're suggesting that it's a minimum, then I would recommend we put minimum in there. I mean, as far as your comment goes.
Yeah.
I'm trying to get clarity on to what the comment was.
Be that's the case.
Yeah. Um, your comment, number two, I have thought about, I think since the moment we started discussing the master plan and the idea that the UDO was coming on board. And I wouldn't use different language, but I -- the way I interpret that is to take the best out of both and put them in the other.
That's what we're saying, yeah.
Yeah.
Because we're already finding -- because I will say, and I should have said, these people that you all pointed to this committee have taken this work very seriously, and they are doing the homework, and they are doing the reading. And not only are they just looking, doing the reading of the additional elements, but they're digging into the UDO as a module 1 and 2 to see what it's saying, as opposed to what the additional elements are saying. And as a part of that, they say, well, wait a minute, there's some language over here that's pretty good, there's some language over here that's pretty good, and why can't we use, encourage the back and forth where we have good language in one place, put it in the other as well? And so that's the reason for that comment, ma'am.
I think the -- this one is probably interesting. I'd like Jeff to think about this one, about whether or not a buffer can exist on an adjoining property. I know our existing UDO provisions a buffer width spanning both parcels. You can have half on one side, half on the other. And given that logic, I wonder what's the problem with having the buffer fully satisfied upon an adjacent parcel? And I know you did mention that times change, but that could conceivably come with a deed restriction that acknowledges that this is a fixed buffer.
But it could, but for example, in the additional element, it talks about a buffer that's owned by a homeowner's association. And it said, okay, that satisfies the requirement for that buffer. And I can tell you from experience, homeowner associations' boards change, and that buffer goes away. That's happened. And now, could you write such a -- could you put something into effect that prevented that from happening? You'd say that you can't do that. Or you could say that if all your Leland pines died, that you have to put something else up that's just as much a buffer as the Leland pines were? That's the issue that if what we're saying is, you have this row of Leland pines, it's a wonderful buffer between Use A and Use B. Use A is Chatham Park, Use B is owned by the homeowner's association, and the Leland buffer line is sitting over here, and all those trees die, and the homeowner says, we're not going to pay for replacing those. And all of a sudden, there's no buffer. Unless you have some regulation, some law, some ordinance that would require them to do that.
I think that would be a zoning violation.
Yeah. Let me address Michael's comment about the UDO and envisioning a buffer on two -- on an adjoining piece of property. What I think it envisions is that each property and each use would have its own buffer, not -- you would not share a buffer, that an industrial use would have a thicker buffer beside a residential use. But that residential use would still have a perimeter buffer of a less magnitude adjacent to the industrial or residential or residential.
Yeah, okay. I thought --
You wouldn't be able to share -- that buffer would not be able to be shared between two private prior parties.
Well, let's say that the buffer was 40 feet. The way I was reading the UDO, that you could have 20 on one side of that line and 20 on the other equal 40. Now, you're saying is 40 would be on one side and 15 or 20 would be on the other.
Right, right. Because you can't encumber somebody else's property for development that they are not developing. I mean, that just wouldn't -- I don't know if that would -- if the UDO is being interpreted that way by readers, we need to have a discussion about that. Because why would you, why would the town take private property and encumber that for development that they're not a party to?
No, agree.
Right.
That's why I think a developer with an agreement with an adjoining property owner could strike an agreement and say, let's put the buffer on, completely on your property, which would be some formal agreement between the two.
That just makes it a lot more -- just makes it harder to administer and to regulate whenever you have these differing buffers. I think it's cleaner when you have a buffer on your property that's buffering an adjacent piece of property and not sharing of -- but we can have that discussion, you know, and further discuss that.
Yeah, I think we should look at the UDO, because I think it talked about development occurring vacant property adjacent, that property developing, and then this property owner being able to reduce their buffer to equal the total. I think it read that one.
Okay, we'll take a look at that.
Do you have a question? Jim, again, thank you so much.
Oh, thank you.
All right. Our last piece of old business is the reclaimed water and year-round water efficiency ordinances with Fred Roy.
Thank you, and good evening. This is, I guess, round three of these draft ordinances for water efficiency policy, not ordinance. The policy has been edited based on comments from our last meeting. What we basically did was took anything that's technical in nature and moved it into our specifications, which is a completely separate document, so that the policy is as generic as possible, with the goal of saving and reducing potable water use as our population grows. The irrigation and water waste ordinance is, in fact, an ordinance with regulatory teeth, if you will, and it has to do with wasting irrigation water and using irrigation systems properly moving forward with our potable system. And the final one is reclaimed water ordinance, which is also known as the purple pipe ordinance. And as you all know, Chatham Park has been installing purple pipe for reclaimed water use for the future. We've got specifications for reclaimed water, and now we've got this proposed ordinance for reclaimed water for the entire town. And one of the questions related to that was Commissioner Fiocco's question of requiring reclaimed water systems to be developed for new development. And the intended language is to not require developers to use reclaimed water unless it's made available by the town at their property. So we can, in the future, look at where we want to expand our reclaimed water system within Pittsburgh based on our reclaimed water source and potential users that are some proximity away from the reclaimed water source. It could be an industry, it could be a subdivision, et cetera, or a retail or commercial center that uses a lot of irrigation. On that, I'll ask or answer any questions you have. We would love to get these documents adopted as soon as possible so we can move forward with kind of promoting and educating the public on how to save potable water.
Well, I would ask in the future that we finish the document such as it says Article XX, and we can just kind of finish.
Right.
You know, we're talking about.
Okay. This is probably going to wind up in the UDO, so we weren't sure where these are going.
This is going to be our code of ordinances, because these other types of things are in Chapter 25.
Right. They're going to be legal documents, it's just not decided yet where they're going exactly. Code of ordinances, UDO, standalone ordinance.
Well, the format indicates to me it was going in code ordinances.
Right.
That you're saying that's undecided at this time.
It's undecided at this time.
Is there a reason to put this into UDO? I mean, I don't think this is land development, this is kind of a policy.
Well, two of them are ordinances and one is policy, so I haven't had the discussion with anyone about exactly where these documents ought to reside once they're adopted. We needed to get through the business of approving the language first, and then we can work on where they're going to reside, Town Code of ordinances versus standalone ordinance.
Just wanted to see if you have an opinion.
I don't think they should be UDO at all.
Okay. So they probably end up in the Town Code of ordinances, yeah.
Which is looks like that's what you could do.
That is what appears to me as well. So Fred, I'll offer you just two things. First page, item E, just a couple of extra words at the beginning that says, you should Says per the where it is available. I'm sure it doesn't work for a dollar.
Okay.
And then on the last page, item 3 makes reference to subsection C, but in fact, it is all -- it is subsection B. And then the syntax for following two items under B is, you know, confusing. I think it's -- I think you're going from B1 to B2 as opposed to B4, 1, B5.
All right. Thank you.
Is there a motion then to approve the ordinances and the policy?
Reclaimed water, same comment, basically, about assuming this is going Chaplin 25 and identifying which article it is. I think this is a question for Mr. Messick. One of the things I'm concerned with is that for use of the reclaimed water, there is an application, an acknowledgement in that application that inspections will occur, the town has a right to enter the property. And what I wanted was some notification. And I think it is provided in page 4, under enforcement, A3, where it says, authority to enter property and conduct investigation and inspections. Authorized agents, officials, or other qualified persons shall have the authority upon presentation of proper credentials. Is that true, then, therefore, that that establishes the fact that you must provide credentials and therefore notify the owner prior to doing an inspection or entering the property?
This language just says if you present a credential, meaning a staff ID or what have you, to enter, to go look at a connection or something like that. It doesn't mention a notification.
I think that in and of itself is notification.
That's a --
Of intent to inspect.
Yeah, that's an immediate notification. It's not like a 24-hour notification or anything.
I just want -- I don't want us to grant ourselves the ability to enter the property without acknowledging to the owner of doing so.
Right.
The fines of $10,000 today and $25,000 today are still there, and they seem really excessive.
I understand that. It is up to --
Perhaps I can need to be persuaded that they need to be excessive.
It is a not-to-exceed number. It could mean $400, it could mean no money whatsoever. This is a cap. This is a cap.
So anything up to that cap.
That's right. And it's subject to the town's, the condition of the system, the situation, the manager's opinion, the attorney's opinion, I mean, this is a, you know, any kind of violation like that would be handled very carefully. This is a standard cap that the state uses.
It is a standard cap.
Yeah, it's like the water quality standards, twenty-five thousand per incident per day for a sedimentation violation.
We're prepared that it might have some big industry to do with.
Right.
It's just a, it's a, it's a number that is not to exceed.
On interruptions of service, item A, page seven, talks about the need to shut down the system. And I think we should add that in those instances, that potable water may be used for irrigation. I think we're going to require it to be used for irrigation and then cut off the supply. Like somebody should have the ability to use their potable connection for those uses.
I guess that they're, that they're choosing, you have to reconnect the irrigation meter to the potable system.
Well, I didn't.
I mean, they, they could have the right to.
They're going to get charged for the sewer component as well.
Yeah, they, they could have every right to use potable water, yeah.
Well, but I think the beginning of this says all irrigation and other authorized uses will use the reclaimed system. So I think I'd like to have in here acknowledgement of an option to use potable water if the reclaimed system is shut down.
So you're at A, interruption of service?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep. Page three. Okay? Irrigation system. Step one.
It is on the sheet.
It is intended to be upheld.
You're correct.
That's all I got.
There a motion, is the board interested in approving the ordinances and policy? I'm gathering that the compelling nature of getting it passed tonight is the fact that it's been in the works for quite some time.
Yes.
Is it forthright to make the corrections, including the citations and so forth, and where it fits into the appropriate town instrument before you make the approval? That's certainly an actionable.
I think it'd be great, yeah. Make a motion that we approve with those corrections.
Second. Move by Michael Fiocco, second in fact, that Wilson Foley. Those in favor, please indicate by the name high.
High.
Josh and Carrie. Thank you, Fred.
You're welcome, thank you.
Under new business, Jeff Jones, we have a fee schedule adjustment for this middle of development agreement.
Thank you, Mayor, for your support. We will have development agreements, the Chatham Park will have development agreements moving forward with other projects, and it was suggested that we come up with a fee, an application fee for the review of these agreements. And we came up with a base fee and then a per acre fee, and then a cap fee of no more than eighty thousand dollars. Depending on how large a development agreement could be, I can envision that we would need to spend more than eighty thousand dollars to review the development agreement. And, you know, I don't know how large that might be, that, that project might be. So that's what's on the table tonight. I can try to field any questions that you, that you have.
Jeff, what is our fee at this time now?
Nothing. We currently have no fee.
And where do we get these, this rate of five hundred plus ten dollars an acre?
So we, we have gotten, when you adopted the small area plan fee, which was a little over a year ago, you came up with a similar rate structure of a base fee plus an acre fee. That is, the small area plan is actually more, the per acre fee is a lot more than the ten dollars an acre, and it's not capped. It was my, taking a little clue from Chapel Hill and the capping, they, they cap their development agreements. I can't remember what the, the cap is there, but they do cap their, their fee for the rezoning to a development agreement project is different than what we're going to be dealing with. But a lot of these clues came from the small area plans. And what we didn't have, and we're spending money on, is the additional elements. There was no fee for that. And we're spending money on, on that committee, making copies, making print jobs, and to include fifteen print jobs for a committee, UDOs, additional elements, master plans. So we're spending money on, on that type of review, and depending on how the review of the development agreement will go, there could be expenditures of money either through a committee, you know, base fees of making copies of things, and/or hiring consultants to help us review, make, make recommendations to you all in the, in the review of that development agreement.
Jeff, you just mentioned three or four things that I think the master plan identified would be part of the compensation, or part of the, what the phrase is, but the additional money required to review those things, which I thought was coming out of three hundred thousand dollars a year.
And it, and it may be coming out of some of that, that, I'm, I have a print budget, printing budget, that's where I'm getting my print monies from for, to make the copies for the additional elements.
I'm just seeing that the development agreement, while, yes, we will have those, I think we need to have a fee structure, but it was my understanding that the three hundred thousand dollars a year was going to be affording the town the ability to hire the consultants and do the analysis. So I was just a little surprised to see this being.
It was suggested to be by the town attorney to come up with a fee.
Well, I think we do need a fee. You're right, we're going to have a development agreements, I just don't know that it applies to Chatham Park at this point.
That's, that's your problem.
And that's my understanding of the agreement we made.
Okay.
We admit in the money that we had budgeted this year to receive from Chatham Park, not knowing what activities are going to be associated with completing the development agreement, I think it was the town's attorney, town attorney's recommendation to maybe stay ahead of that cost. Because we certainly, I mean, we, we identified certain costs that we were going to have for consultants, as Mr. Jones said, for different aspects of Chatham Park, unexpected costs certainly, slightly smaller scale, but they're starting to pile up, would be the costs associated with the additional elements committee and the work that they're doing. And so we're accommodating that, but the unknown at this point is development agreement and the amount of review that's going to be associated with that is kind of an unknown. So we're just getting into that process now. So it's because of that, maybe to stay ahead of those costs, that we, that we would identify some, some insurance to make sure that we provide enough property for, for necessary.
I'd be thinking we would have an accounting settlement in the next fiscal year of any additional money provided for this development agreement review by Chatham Park?
I'm not sure, I understand the question.
If it is part of the money that they are giving to the town on an annual basis, it sounds, I thought you were saying that if it's not in this budget cycle, in this year's contribution, that it would delay the development agreement process? And are we saying then, any additional money put forth on this would accrue to the next fiscal year?
No, I didn't say.
As a deduction, that's what I'm asking. So you didn't say.
I didn't say exactly, I just said that we were, we were looking to make sure that we had enough money moving forward to complete the development agreement review process. We just, it's been known as, as at this point, that it has to be submitted, it has to be submitted by a certain date. We look forward to being submitted by that date. And then what sort of, what sort of talent, what sort of consultation do we need to bring in to help that review? You know, it's, 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 it's a, that is kind of an unknown, it's, it's pretty bad across yet. So given Chatham Park has a significant development agreement that, that we're going to be looking at, and given that others made as well, it was suggested at this point in time, Mr. Messick can certainly weigh in if something's off target here, just to kind of identify some of those possible and no cost or form of hedgeback.
Well, I, I, I agree. We need to have a structures put in place so that the folks know what they're getting into when they want to do a development agreement. I'm just saying that, it's my understanding, we have an agreement in Chatham Park that part of the money they are giving the town on an annual basis is for a purpose of that review.
Yes, it is, and there may be some money to get us started in that. Now, of course, that amount is decreasing, the amount of adware they're receiving, and so that requires a different type of accounting moving forward. And so, so what we have here is, is in just, in just research, Mr. Messick's input, is a fee that, that appears consistent with, at least, you know, at least in terms of practice, what other agencies try to do in, in the review of the.
A little offer, again, back in September of last year, town board adopted a, a area, small area plan fee, which is eight twenty-five plus twenty dollars an acre. And at that time, I recall, there wasn't really a discussion whether Chatham Park was going to pay that or not. I've been working on the assumption that they weren't paying that. And so that's probably going to be, you know, a significant amount of money that's coming our way whenever the small area plan gets submitted. You could just change the budget document to say small area plan slash development agreement, and that be the cost, and that cover both the small area plan and the development agreement review. And if a development did not have a, a small area plan, they would just be paying that fee because they're doing a development agreement, instead of having two, in Chatham Park's case, two separate fees, one for development agreement, one for small area plan, and then paying into the pot twice to, to review these two documents.
Well, I think they're, they weren't being separate though, because of, one, what you just described, might only have one component versus the other.
Right. Well, it would be a small area plan or.
I understand.
And or.
But Chatham Park is the only one that's going to have a small area plan because that doesn't exist anywhere else.
Right.
Until the next PDD comes along.
Okay, right. You want to try to digest one before you take on another?
Well, we've already set it up so that it's a possibility.
It is.
Right. So. I think, so Chapel Hill, they, they cap it.
They do, they, they do have a cap, I can't recall what the cap is, but I remember thinking that, I like that, because I don't want to have a situation where, in Chatham Park's case, they have seventy-two hundred acres, and this really, this fee gets out of hand and it costs, costs more for them to submit than it will for us to review the application. And this, and this fee is debatable between y'all, I mean, that, that may be too high. This was sort of a stab at it to make, make it go.
Yeah, I think Chapel Hill's on certain development agreements, it says fee will be negotiated.
It does.
Between the council and.
It does, but they have this weird rezoning, that rezoning to a development agreement project or something.
Yeah.
And that's what I was taking clues from. But you're correct, that a development agreement is just negotiated between the town and, and the developer. Actually, in my practice, that's what it's always been. There, there really wasn't a review fee, it was just negotiated between the town and the developer.
Maybe that should be our fee. Do we have the legal ability to do that?
Sure. You don't have to approve the development agreement in the first place, and you can negotiate whatever terms you want to. And if you want to be reimbursed for the consultant fee, that you had to expend and have it reviewed, then presumably that could be a time of the conversation between you and the develop. But like Jeff said, I mean, you are, a year ago, you did the small area plan, no questions, and so that's why this has proceeded to this point. The development agreement is coming, it'll be here, you know, before you meet, and you're going to charge them a fee, this is the time to do it. You're not going to charge them a fee, then we'll go on and go do something else. So you, you just pick up or?
Well, the question is, would we, would we charge this fee when we've already got an agreement that says you're giving us money to do this work?
It's not what the agreement says specifically, it says that it will reimburse the town for the extra cost and, you know, the impacts of Chatham Park. This may be an impact of Chatham Park. There may be other impacts of Chatham Park.
I think it did specifically mention development agreement. I'm just saying, you know, I don't want to have an agreement with a entity that we then in some way, shape, or form violate. That's my concern. And my recollection is, we worked really hard to get an agreement to where this group was providing the town three hundred thousand dollars a year minus adware taxes on a yearly basis to do this extra work that the town was going to do, and granted, on their project. So it's, I don't, I don't think this fee would apply to them, because I think they're already paying that fee.
Would the small area plan pertain to them too?
I don't recall, would the small area plan be a part of it or not? Do recall the development agreement.
If you think that Chatham Park is covered, it'd be better not to have this fee at all, or to do it after the development agreement is submitted from Chatham Park. Because I don't think you can have a policy that says development agreements, which I'll have an application fee of X, and then say, but not Chatham Park's development fee. So that would be somewhat arbitrary. You could even, let them file without a fee. That would be easier to do.
Regardless of the fee structure? In other words, if we adopted a fee structure that said per negotiation between this number per-
A fee, a fee needs to be black and white, you know, it needs to be explicit. But if he needs to be across the board in uniform for all development agreements. So you can't really say it's for all development agreements except Chatham Park. So you'd be better off to wait till next meeting, after they've submitted, and then do whatever flat fee or whatever development agreement fee for anybody else in the future.
Okay. Here's the, so a potential PDD that might happen in the future. A hundred acre site would only generate fifty hundred dollars from a review fee. And that might not cover-
Right.
All the consultants that we need for that. Transportation consultants, environmental consultants, and things like that. So you're, it's, it's, it's hard to think about Chatham Park, and how large they are, and that fee might grow, as opposed to an impactful one hundred acre site that would generate traffic concerns, environmental concerns, and they're only paying fifteen hundred dollars under this rate structure.
Right. So that's where I think it speaks to the idea of a negotiation or a consultation between the two, so that you can identify the impact as much as possible and agree on the fee.
I was wondering if what Mr. Masick is saying is that there needs to be some predictability for those persons who are contemplating doing such development, and saying that the fee will be negotiable doesn't give much predictability. Is that your argument?
But certainly just bring this up at another time, and have Chatham Park submit their plans, and go forth with the review of the developer agreement, under their current agreement, and come back at another time. Because we're going to need to have a fee at some point in time, or an understanding that development agreements will be negotiated on a per-case basis.
Perhaps the, the base fee amount needs to increase-
It could.
Cover that smaller-
That's right.
Development.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And that's going to be advantageous too, to take another look back at the, at the agreement that pertains to the three hundred thousand and make sure what it, what it actually encodes.
Okay. Why don't we, why don't we do that? Okay. All right.
Do we need a motion to delay that to a future time?
I don't think so.
So we just simply don't take-
You can table this if you want to.
Take action in the future. All right. If we're now to manage the subject.
Thank you very much, Mayor. Just a few things to update on. Speaking of agreements, we have agreements that are in process, namely Sanford-Forstman, the MOU, or Memorandum of Understanding on Reclamation Facility, those reclamation facilities. Also, the Chatham Park Agreement Regarding Guarantee to Financing, and of course, a Development Agreement Regarding Chatham Park Itself, that we just referred to moments ago. All of those are in process. The most, most immediate one, I guess, would be the Sanford-Forstman. We've incorporated, or Mr. Masick has incorporated your responses into, into that agreement, and we had a statement of the town, Mr. Kiyoko's comments as well. I believe we'll be following up with Sanford this week, possibly scheduling one more meeting on those final terms. Of course, the other issues fall into play as well, and we're continuing to work with Chatham Park investors on those as well. I think we've got a little bit more work to do on, on some of those terms, incorporating terms like that, that are going to be to the town's benefit as well, as hopefully to Chatham Park. So we want to make sure we're representing the town properly on those, and we're looking forward to presenting those to you as soon as, as soon as it's desirable to do so. Sanitary sewer infilling infiltration, work continues on that. Video inspection was completed, I believe, last week. We then used that information to determine how the slip lines we put into the, into the actual structures themselves. That work is, I believe, expected to start in early December.
Yes.
So, so we continue, we're moving forward on that. Again, the ultimate goal with all of that is to kind of reduce the amount of stormwater that is treated by our wastewater plant and future wastewater plant. Elementary school sidewalk, NCA seven sidewalk, contracts have been signed. We could begin construction once we exchange all the documents, as soon as this week. We'll keep you posted on that. We're only going to complete before Valentine's of two thousand and seventeen. So keep that moving forward. Chatham County Housing Committee have posted some of the meeting dates that are coming up. Of course, Mayor Proketham, Alderman, and Commissioner Wilson Foley are part of that committee, and so we're alternating between Sauer City and Hillsborough, and I don't think there's anything keeping anyone from attending on that, but just want to keep real in the presence of what's going on nonetheless. This evening, of course, you received a presentation from Dr., it's unbroken, Dr. Knapp. I heard, I heard Mayor pronounce it as Dr. Knapp, so that's what I'm going to go with. The, we did receive those, those materials tonight. I'm printing them off. Before you go, I'll try to give you part copies of those, at least in black and white. We'll be putting those on the materials from the slide presentation. We'll be putting those on the website as well. We'll have a funding coming up as far as electric, people charging stations. We'll have a funding agreement. I haven't received it yet from Duke Energy, but hopefully the December meeting will add that to a group. Robeson Creek Bridge Replacement, there is, that works continuing. I provided contact information there, and so, so it looks like, it looks like that's moving forward. We talked a little bit in the past about widening fifteen five oh one, and we'll be pending on Friday's bill meeting, December sixth. As far as staff is concerned, we'll learn a little bit more about the plans for the already developing, a list of questions. It does appear, I think this was discussed briefly at the last meeting, it does appear that light lanes are going to be part of the project as well as sidewalks on both sides of the streets. So, which, which is kind of, and I've talked about today, it's kind of, it's kind of critical what you asked for. I think, I think as we look at the streets, there's going to be some gaps that are created, little gaps that are created. And then the next question that people are going to receive, you know, particularly the sidewalk that ends at law, there's on the, I guess, again, east side of Hillsborough Street, there's currently no sidewalk, so it's, this project will not extend sidewalk north of the other, south of law. So it'll kind of, it'll kind of stop there. So that's going to be a very obvious gap. So we're going to have to work through our pedestrian plan and see how we want to fill in some of these gaps, just kind of thinking, taking a step forward, and maybe some, some very important work that we'll be talking about, keeping you all today on there as well. We want, in terms of some other work downtown, to kind of help improve aesthetics and some safety, and just kind of continually tie up loop signs as far as potential liability concerns would be the, what we're anticipating is a new downtown curb structure that would be going in. We included it, make sure the handout going into the north, west corner of Salisbury and Hillsborough Street. You can see there's kind of a grassy dugout area that's right there, that's right near the curb, the curb, well, the curb, the non-existing curb. But you kind of come around that corner really quick, there's some big park there. There's, there's a bit of risk involved. Doesn't look good, it's tripped hazard, and so with repaving, in addition to the repaving of Salisbury recently, it's really sticking out like a sore thumb, so we've been coming that off recently. And the, the next, next few weeks, I think we'll be hopefully moving forward on some curbing on that, and we'll be balancing that out, and I think the grassy areas. And I think we haven't really had a plan or discussed a really concrete for idea as far as landscaping, so that may be some things that our downtown stakeholders want to get involved in, or if that's a good look. I don't, I don't like to pretend to know exactly what's best for that area off the top of my head, but I think that's the conversation that we're going to have, is all we plan of doing right at the moment is just kind of making it safe. But it does kind of lend itself to some visual improvements as well. In your, in your FYI section, I included a couple of things real quick, on this matter of, like, there's, there's something that we'll probably have to act on coming up in the future, a longstanding issue that's, that's, that now appears to be wrapping up back in two thousand and three or the early lots when Chad Forest was being, was getting infrastructure installed, town and Boll Realty were involved with some, some agreements on the, on upsizing certain elements of the water system. And so we've included that information in your packet, the, I think we'll be coming forward in the next meeting or so, regarding a budget recommendation on mitigating that. Staff has verified the amounts that were submitted by, by Boll Realty's engineer, and kind of gone back through the history and reduced it somewhat. But that information's there for your review. If you have any questions on that, let us know. The, also related to coming up, related, well, I guess, one other thing of the widening, the other thing in FYI would be some of the information regarding fifteen five oh widening, kind of seeing it's more detail, I guess. I'm going to use X scope to the projects and follow. Again, if you have any questions on that, let me know, and we'll be reporting back on that. One or two things off script here. We're looking also at the possibility of making a connection, speaking of Chad Forest and Water Main, where, where Springdale and Fox Chapel Lane would meet. As it stands right now, there's a Water Main that comes down Fox Chapel Lane, there's a Water Main that comes up, Springdale, and they're about fifteen feet apart, and for whatever reason, they would never tend. So, so I think it would be a benefit in terms of water pressure and water quality in that, that area, full disclosure, my second floor shower is apparently a drip, so I admit that it will be, if you pull this off, I'll be benefiting somewhat. But that also is kind of, worries me a little bit, and I think we have to resolve some of the pressure, we have to make sure we know something unknown as far as the pressure in that area goes before we-
It did require a, we are the-
It required a pressure reducing valve. But anyway, that will, for whatever reason, wasn't connected, that is something that we're going to be seeking to connect. The audit finding, our consultant raised and associates tonight indicated that we did have a finding on that, but he, in terms of, in terms of their meeting, invited a higher expense as far as the waste industry's contract was concerned. What he did mention was, we received a like amount coming in, and exact, the exact same amount coming in as far as revenues are concerned. So it wasn't, I mean, that's not like we spent more than what we had, and we spent exactly what we had coming in. But I think if the others had called for doing anything, it's probably, it's probably leading the year-end wrap-up too quickly, and this was a note that simply skipped that lot. And so we're not, I don't, we're not used to doing the year-end as quickly, and in this case, it was kind of, that was kind of a five thousand dollars. So we're told that the finding is, is a non-issue, particularly in terms of the money that was balanced out in terms of revenue. So we know what happened, we know how it happened, and we're going to make sure that that sort of administrative thing doesn't happen. And then, I guess finally, mention too, the Christmas parade will be taking place this year, December eleventh. I mentioned that to you guys partially because you have a role in it, unless you don't. I guess it's up to you. But in years past, of course, board members have walked, they have ridden in vehicles, they've ridden in golf carts. So I think you guys keep talking, and decide, I don't, someone say horses? I don't know that we have any horses, but we did, we talked about it. So let me know what you want to do, and we'll make arrangements to make it happen. We do have some candy already. Dallas, Ms. Alice hit the post Halloween sales, and we have plenty of candy, she's got a lot of ways to take it. With that, I'm going to tap out.
There are a couple of things I wanted to add. I ran into, although physically, the gentleman who was hired to do the evening of the sidewalks, the, grinding, thank you, very nice gentleman. And then, after telling him that I was the mayor, I did notice that there were quite a few, oh, grindings on the path in front of my house. I worked with Paul today on colors of the kiosks for the, for the upcoming wonderful things that are going to go up in the three different locations to post things. Now we have taken down the no posters on the telephone poles, because everybody got such a big kick out of that. Brian and I have been working on a publication by Waste Industries on how to maximize recycling, and so that's going forward. I don't know if anybody else opened their email late this afternoon. Jeff Taylor from the planning board discussed some heavy criticisms that had been made of the detour on the Robeson Creek Bridge Replacement, and the safety concerns about big trucks coming through that area, so if-
Did you pass those alarms in?
To Gary Phillips, okay, all right. And while I'm, while I'm speaking, let me say that John Vonnis was very sad not to be with us tonight. One of the things that he absolutely feels strongly about, and is so glad to see Jim Nass's committee, is the dark skies proposal, and he wanted it stressed that, that he was absolutely in favor of that. He also would like the board to think about the idea of electronic meetings, so that in an instance like this, where he was really very engaged in some of the topics that it could still be, that he could be here without, without passing along whatever dreaded disease he's got. But he indicated that the school board has gone to a system where one can attend electronically, and that the board might want to think about that as a possibility. So with that, we'll go with Commissioner Concerns. Jay Farrell?
I don't have any发言 on that.
Beth?
Jeff, the PBA was thinking, they were wondering if there could be a presentation to them and a discussion on the UDO.
Okay.
I know that-
Let's talk about that.
Okay. They, yeah, they, I've urged them for more than a year to read it, read it, read it, and I know it's hard to read it, and put yourself in a position of doing business with this regulation that you don't quite really understand. And they really just broke down and said, can, we get a presentation? Because we don't, we don't speak this much.
Yeah, let's, let's talk about that.
Okay, great.
Okay. All right. And we're in a position of entertaining a motion to adjourn at nine thirty-five?
So whom?
Second? Second.